Mayor calls me in order. First item is roll call.
Alderman Bass.
Here.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here.
Alderman Hedley.
Here.
Alderman Stratton.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
Next time is the indication led by Mike Cassidy from Faith United Methodist Church. And then that's been followed by a pledge of allegiance to the God of the back three twenty one.
Let's pray. Lord God, we thank you for gathering us here together tonight. We thank you for this opportunity to share with one another and to share with you. Thank you for the awesome responsibility you've given these men and women that they might work for the betterment of this community and its people. They gave us the wisdom and the courage and the hope to speak into one another and to be genuinely in love. And in your holy name we pray, amen. By the music, should be fine. The United States of America and its community of all who worship the King, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next time is the referral to agenda.
Uh, no changes, Mayor.
Alright. See no procs? See no procs, then move on to citizens' participation. Uh, we ask citizens to come forward to the podium and microphone to address the board. Just give your name and address for the record. Do you have anyone who wishes to address the board to see me?
Mr. Mayor and Board, I'd like to, uh, Mike Smith with Padlades of Honor. We held a chili cook-off competition, uh, last weekend, I guess October fifth weekend. And I'm here to, uh, to say thank you to the city for all their help. Uh, the city put its team together, the mayor's team, an award-winning team.
Mm-hmm.
And the police department. The police department, uh, put a team together and of course we had Central Jack and level businesses in town. And, uh, just here to say thank you for all your help. Um, also the Parks Department, as you know, always does a good job. And I'm here to just make thank you to them. They helped set it up, they helped, uh, help us whatever, whatever we needed in the pavilion. Cause you know, they know what's going on over there. And, uh, uh, their, their team is always good and their team's always best. So just to thank you. And we even, uh, was able to get a couple of judges from the city and we had a good time. Did you have a good time, Mayor?
Oh yeah, real good time.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. She, she said she was leaving anything? Oh, man.
He, uh... He said he wants, I, I saw him today, he said he wanted to try it again next year. And I said, are you gonna ask the mayor to step down? What was your answer, Steve? Well, he can be there, okay. Thank you again. We, the whole intent was to raise some money, we did raise some money for the, for the tribute and to have a good time, but I think we had a good time.
Oh yeah, it was a good time.
Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you for putting on. Have anyone else who wishes to address the board? Alright, next up then we have the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Alderman West approved the consent agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Hedley. Any discussions? Alright, seeing none, all fair to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed at the same time? Next up then we have previous business, we have liquor license requests for tip stop.
We need a motion.
Okay, so we reviewed this last time, so we, tonight, uh, if there's any questions, we need a motion for approval and then a vote. And most of Alderman Hedley for approval of the liquor license, do you have a second? Second, Alderman Bass. Any discussions then? Seeing none, all fair to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed at the same time? Alright, six zero minutes. Seeing no new business, move on to presentation. Uh, presentation from the Grain Valley Partnership Annual Report.
Mayor and Board, first of all, I'd like to thank you for being flexible with me. I was supposed to do this a couple of weeks ago and I came home on vacation, super sick. So I really appreciate the flexibility that you guys have allowed me. Um, I just wanted to kind of, we have a lot of new people that may not be one hundred percent up to date with who the Grain Valley Partnership actually is. Um, two years ago, prior to me being a part of the partnership, they decided to merge the Economic Development Corporation with the Chamber of Commerce to create the partnership. Our business structure looks as one as I do have, a board of directors. I do answer to a president, then it is me. And at this point in time, I run both of those, the EDC side and the Chamber side. The Grain Valley Partnership, our mission is to be a leader in the growth of Grain Valley. Our vision, to create an atmosphere of pro-business, pro-community with throughout the Grain Valley. Our values are to, to provide a positive return on investment for our members, investors by attracting and retaining jobs. And by creating a pro-business organization, the businesses want to be a part of. My title is Executive Director. I celebrated two years, um, in August with the partnership. I was originally hired as the Director of Business Services. That kind of ran the Chamber side, right? Um, I did serve under Rob Harrington as the Director, followed by Tim Russell. Um, once Rob was no longer with us, Tim is no longer with us. I was promoted to the Executive Director position, um, in November of two thousand and eighteen. Um, I have started my process of becoming a Certified Economic Development Director. Like I said, we do have a board of directors, right now we've got thirteen that sit on our board. I will list those, Ryan Hunt, um, the City of Grain Valley City Administrator, he is my President. Justin Tyson of Tyson Auto Services is my Vice President. Jeff Smith with Americas Community Bank serves as my Treasurer. Martha Meyer serves as my Secretary. On the board also is Dr. Mark Snow with Grain Valley Schools. Chief Jeff Rose with BJC. Kim Rome with Blue Ridge Bank and Trust. Rod Nodzinger with OOIDA. Yomanda West with Value Tax Services, also a City of Grain Valley Alderman. Dan Strader with State Bank. Lance Shepherd with Shepherd's Roofing. Treat the Mixed Bride with Blue Branch Manor. And Mayor Mike Childs with the City of Grain Valley. The accomplishments that I personally have seen since I've been here since two thousand and seventeen is building trust. Due to previous struggles, due to the many transitions within the organization and the merger of two entities, before I came, trust had been lost. Without the trust of the community and the business owners, our progress that we would have made would have meant nothing. So for the first year of my employment, I did a lot of behind the scenes, which is kind of active, right? I, I kind of started pushing our brand out a little bit, started creating programs. Um, wasn't too much in your face as, as they were used to with the Chamber. Um, when the Chamber was struggling, I think they went trying to get a lot of money as quickly as they can and in any ways they could. So I did a lot of behind the scenes. Um, we created programs. Those programs increased the value of the organization, um, to our businesses by offering additional programs that would incorporate all of our businesses. So instead of just having a monthly luncheon that a lot of our small businesses cannot attend, we're doing more after hours. We're doing those on a monthly, so that's, you know, after time is, their workday is done, they can, they can now get out and network. We've also created a coffee connection that's first thing in the morning and I've seen great results. We've increased visibility using our programs, promoting and using our brand. And using social media to create better understanding of who we are and gain exposure to the community. It really is the community that pushes Grain Valley to be as great as we are. Our communities got to know about our businesses, so they support them and more small businesses will open. The growth, we have welcomed more than fifteen new partners in the two years that I have been a part of the organization. I've also been able to reestablish partners that somehow were lost with the merger. Our goals are to continue to grow, continue to add value to the organization, touch those businesses that still have no idea who we are. Continue to form important relationships with our business community, community leaders and outside organizations. Serve on boards and committees to, to gain insight of what is really going on in Missouri and the Kansas City region. Our challenges, of course, we all have them, is using the appropriate software that allows multiple entities, such as city administration and myself, that, that we can stay connected and have access and stay updated. Getting into businesses that may not understand the value of the service that we offer. Building trust with those businesses, businesses. Confidentially, confidentiality is a must in having a business understand that the partnership cannot and will not breach. Some of the, the questions that we ask are, are, are pretty invasive, right? So we have to make sure that they understand that it's, we're, we're one hundred percent confidential. I cannot share the information pertaining to a specific business. By that business, I can only share what their feedback was. And in getting them to understand it, it's huge and rightfully so. My sole purpose on the EDC side is business retention and expansion. So let's give you an overview of what that, that is. The purpose behind the BRE program is to recognize potential road, roadblocks that a business may be having. To identify a joint business and keep them in Grain Valley, to offer support to either expansion where they're at or to move into a larger building. To identify potential bus, businesses that could, that we could target due to the demand of suppliers needed for our existing businesses. The example that I use is commercial roofing, right? Our commercial roofers, they need sheet metal. So if we have enough commercial roofers, it might be really good for us to target a sheet metal manufacturer. Try to get them into Grain Valley because that, that helps not only the Grain Valley community, bringing in businesses, bringing in another business or employment. It also helps our existing businesses by cutting their costs so they don't have to pay for all that, you know, that shipping and handling. Um, that's just an example. And then of course is, is to bring, to, to create a positive business environment. Our business environment right now is, is, is very positive. We're seeing a lot of businesses opening, those are small and corporate. Um, just a couple of weeks ago, I had the pleasure of sitting down with, um, a representative from the Missouri Department of Economic Development. And he's wanting to become a very active partner here in Grain Valley. Um, that's positive, you know? I mean, that means that the connections that I am making with the outside entities is, is helping. And they're seeing Grain Valley as a super positive place that they want to be a part of to ensure that, that we are, we're, we're getting that growth that is expected. Um, the relationship that, that I am getting with the MEDC, which is the Missouri Economic Development Council, is getting stronger. Um, they're actually wanting to come to Grain Valley to have a sit-down with myself, our city administration, kind of take a tour of Grain Valley. And help guide and support us in our endeavors to, to bring in new businesses. The next step that we have to, to do to create that BRE, um, and these are steps and things that were identified with meetings with the city staff, is to create a BRE program that works effectively between the city and the partnership. Develop a system that can generate the needed and necessary information, the data, to ensure that Grain Valley is meeting all the needs of our existing businesses while generating a positive new business attraction environment. We also need to upload, update our LOIS. So for, for those of you that do not understand, LOIS is our location one. So it's this website, you can go to it, anybody can go to it, location one. And all of our existing buildings and properties are listed on there. Um, there used to be a business in Blue Springs that, that kept that very current for everybody, they shuttered it. Um, so it's a transition that we're having within our own, you know, with, with losing a couple of directors, um, not understanding how this works. And the fact that it wasn't being updated by an outside business, that's something that we need to work on. Um, the data is not current, it needs to get current and it needs to look conducive, it needs to look nice. We've got some pages that look different than other pages. So it's working together with the city, working together with our business owners, the ones that own those properties. And the brokers that actually are listing them, getting that information together and making sure that it is, is necessary to put on the, or the, everything that we have, we can update and it makes it look really nice. Um, another thing that we need to do is create a brochure that can be accessed from both the city website and our website, the Go Grain Valley website. Um, something that gives our demos, you know, kind of, kind of helps sell Grain Valley in, in just a little nutshell. So I'm working with the city on that too. And so some of the, how do we accomplish the above-mentioned steps? Creating a workable BRE program, continued communications between the city and the partnership. During my certification training, BRE is an individual class that is needed to meet the requirements of the certification. This, there is a BRE class next month that I'm hoping to attend. It's in, it's in Omaha. That'll give me a better foundation of the BRE program and what's needed, so I can create that and we can move forward. Um, start, you know, collecting all the data that's needed. We need to create a system that generates the data. There is software that just came to light that, um, we have access to, it's called Blue Ocean. Not too many of us actually know how to use that software. I have reached out to the people that have the software and I will get an extensive training on that software so that we can better utilize it. With that, the city will have a login, I will have a login. So anytime that I reach out, make contact, I enter information, anybody at the city, um, will have access to that. And anytime they do something, they can update it as well and I have access to that. So it, it keeps us all in checks and balances, we can see if it's a new project, where, where we're at, what's lacking, what's needed. Um, so I, I have reached out to them and I should have it training here pretty quickly. Once again, we need to update LOIS. That's me reaching out and I have reached out to many of the brokers already. Um, William Glasgow is one of them, right? And he has sent me all, over all of his, his current properties. So it's just getting that, that information updated, so our LOIS is up to date. And working with the city to make sure that they like the way our LOIS looks and, and, and we're attracting the right people. To create that brochure, um, we're gonna gather, uh, the, all the information that we want. The city and I will work together to do that and we'll get that publicized and then create it and have it updated on both of our websites. And of course, the main way to accomplish any of this is to have that open communication line between the city and the partnership. Um, that relationship is vital. And the last part is, we, we, we should all be super excited. Grain Valley is, is the next up and coming community. We're showing it in, in our population growth, we're showing it with the businesses that we've got coming in, you know, the Taco Bell and the Cook Trips. Um, I'm super excited to be in the position that I am and I truly look forward to growing not only myself, so that I can better serve this community, but working alongside of each of you to make sure that we're all on that same page. Does anybody have any questions?
What is, what are some of the things that you guys do to retain the business that you have now?
It's just making sure, so, I mean, creating, just, just creating that trust, right? Making sure that I, I, I reach those businesses and some of them are very, very hard to get into. Um, I'm there, you know, just, just reaching out to them, making sure they know who we are. Making sure they know the resources that I did have. I do believe I skipped a slide, right? So I, I have all this data that I've collected, that I may not be able to help facilitate what their needs are. But I've got it in my back pocket with some of these people that we work with. Um, if it's score, if it's, um, source link, you know, i- if it's any of, anything like that, being able to help them. If they have, if they're having an issue with the utility and they've reached out but they can't get anywhere. Having that relationship with now EverG, it used to be KC P and L, was fired. Those are relationships that I have, that I can help kind of step in if there is that need in which I need to step in.
And, and when we're attracting business, is there certain organizations or certain things that you attend to, to go after businesses? Or kind of how does that work, when attracting businesses?
So, so there's different, there's, there's different ways that we can do that. Of course, we all have that discussion, everybody wants to sit down in a restaurant, right? So one of the things that we can do is kind of say, okay, what would fit Grain Valley? Um, and, and it's us going after them, if it's the broker going after them, you know, if it's OOIDA, they got a perfect location. If it's OOIDA going after them, it's trying to get our name seen. Um, another way that we can attract and, and some of the bigger, and I, I did skip a slide because I mentioned all of this, like the Missouri Partnership. Um, they are huge, um, they're a recent backside of Jeff City. They now have a, uh, an office here in, in KC. They will send us projects. So between the city and I, we kind of see those projects, we see if they meet our needs or if we, we meet their requirements. And then we can answer those RFI's. KC ADC, which is the Kansas City Area Development Council, they're the same thing. Um, they'll send us projects, I work, I go see them on a monthly basis at a luncheon. Um, it's, it, I know what's happening in Grain, or in, in Missouri through those, those organizations. MEDC is another one, they'll send me weekly updates. I can see what's happening in St. Louis, I can see what maybe a little community in St. Louis has done to generate, you know? So then I can bring that back to the city and, and kind of, kind of bring that in, into play as well.
Pasha, do you feel like once the census is complete next year and they're able to get all that information, will that just kind of open, kind of give you more of the idea of what kind of businesses we can go after or even what businesses might be interested in us? Like how big of a part does the census play in that?
The census is gonna be great information for our demographics. Because there's a lot, there's a lot of businesses out there that won't even look at certain locations without so much population, traffic count. All of those things we get generated, right? KC ADC, um, all these people, they, they, they can tell us our traffic count like that on any given area. Um, Cook Trips, Cook Trips, Cook Trips is exciting for Grain Valley, not because they're coming, right? It's a great business, I love Cook Trips, so I'm excited to get my guests there and supper, my sweet tea, whatever. But the thing about Cook Trips is they do their due diligence. They don't just, and I know it looks like they put one on any corner, they know where they're gonna go and they're gonna be successful. That, that in itself is gonna show whether businesses pay, if Cook Trips is serious, that's what's gonna generate the rest. But yes, the census will have a, you know, the updated census, the updated demographics are super important. And I think the, the big thing that Grain Valley sets forth for themselves, not only by growth of population, we're a young community, right? Our average age is like thirty-four to thirty-six. That's huge, that's huge. So all those things play a factor in some of, in, in getting some of the businesses. Anything else?
Do you feel like, you said you mentioned, and, and hu- communication between the city and the partnership, do you feel that's, that's good?
It is good. And you know, you, the Aldermen here are all very, very intelligent, smart people. You guys wouldn't be doing what you're doing if you didn't want a better Grain Valley. And as far as the staff, they know the stuff. I can, I can go to Ryan, I can go to Ken, I can go to Struza at any given time. And they're there to help me, they're, we're there to work together. Um, eventually I would like to be less of a burden to them, I, I wouldn't be able to take on more. I, I, I will need the city's help in, in updating the LOIS because I think it's important that we're all on that same page. Eventually I won't need to do that with the city, right? Cause we'll already have that established and it'll be up to me to make sure it's updated. Um, so as we move forward, I, I think the communication is great, it just needs to continue. There can't be any kind of breach in it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, see no additional presentations, move on to public hearing. Uh, first public hearing is for Planning and Zoning Commission Establishment.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll just turn it over to Mr. Strohson to give an overview of, report on this.
Mr. Mayor and members of the board, the bill is before you as amending chapter four hundred, the zoning regulations of the code and ordinance to include new sections regarding the planning and zoning commission, as well as the section four hundred point three six oh to be amended to address the appointment of members of the Board of Adjustment. What this basically does is establishes the appointment, the term, the roles and functions of the Planning and Zoning Commission. On May twenty-nine, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a special meeting. Joe led that meeting and provided a overview of the powers and duties of the Planning and Zoning Commission as it pertains to the Missouri state statute. During that meeting, it was noted that changes need to be made to city ordinances to ensure compliance with state statute and to be fully transparent on how commission members are appointed, what their terms are, the election of officers and their powers and duties. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. A summary of the proposed changes recommended by staff included, the commission would consist of seven members, including a member of the Board of Aldermen. Presently, there are eight members and the Aldermen is a non-voting liaison to the commission. The term of each member would be four years. This complies with state statute. Presently, a commission member serves a two-year term. Appointments are made by mayor with approval by the Board of Aldermen, election of officers and responsibilities, as well as their powers and duties. In addition, the resolution included amendment to section four hundred point three six zero pertaining to the Port, Board of Adjustment to clarify that members are appointed by the mayor and approved by the Board of Aldermen. After discussion and debate, the commission amended section four hundred point four z- z- seven zero of the proposed resolution offered by staff to read. The Planning and Zoning Commission shall consist of seven voting members. In addition, a member of the Board of Aldermen shall, shall serve as a non-voting liaison. The commission then voted five to zero to approve resolution nineteen point oh two, which is a part of your packet. Now, one thing I just want to point out that the proposed amendments to chapter four hundred of the code and ordinances contained in resolution nineteen oh two and the proposed ordinance are a recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Board of Aldermen can vote to accept, or the Board of Aldermen has statutory authority to not accept the commission's recommendation or make amendments to the proposed ordinance. Public notice was given in regards to this public hearing in the examiner on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Staff recommends approval of the proposed ordinance before you.
Alright, anyone have any questions? Uh, as this is a public hearing, I'll open it up for, uh, public comments either for or against the proposal. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak for or against? Alright, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Next up, then move on to second public hearing. It's a planning and zoning vacation of right-of-way and utility easements.
Thank you. So the second proposed public hearing deals with amending chapter four hundred zoning regulations to basically propose a new section regarding the vacation of right-of-way and utility easements. What this does is establishes a process so that owners of lands adjoining on both sides of a right-of-way or easement can file an application for said area to be vacated. I've included a map in your packet that kind of illustrates the two proposals of either a vacation of a right-of-way or a vacation of an alley. Uh, the blue area here is a alley that was platted, but was never been used as an alley. The red was platted as a proposed street, but has never been used as the street. So what this process does is basically gives an opportunity of the property owners who have property on either side of either an alley or a right-of-way to request the city to vacate those. And typically then one half of the area would go back to each of the adjoining property owners. The resolution establishes this process, um, so that an application must be signed by at least seventy-five percent of the owners of lands adjacent on both sides of the right-of-way proposed to be vacant. The applicant must also submit a filing fee, a legal description, a survey drawing and a consent form from each of the utilities, the electric, gas, cable, telephone, water and sewer, sign that they have no objection. and sewer, sign that they have no objection to the vacation. The Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on the vacation request. Notice of the hearing will include a publication in the examiner and mail notice to property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the vacated area, at least fifteen days prior to the public hearing. The Planning and Zoning Commission, upon conclusion of the public hearing, will make a recommendation to the Board of Aldermen, approval, approval with conditions, disapproval, or forward to the Board of Aldermen without a recommendation. The Board of Aldermen will then decide by reviewing the requests, evaluate recommendations from Planning and Zoning Commission and staff, and use that criteria, such as the vacation is in the public interest, there is no private rights that will be injured or endangered, the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience, and the right-of-way or easement to be vacated no longer serves a public interest. The Board of Aldermen will approve their vacation request by ordinance. The city clerk would then submit that certified copy of the ordinance for recording to the Jackson County Recorder of Deeds. Now, if any of the owners, owners of the adjacent property who would have been a proper party to the application but did not sign the application, if they submit a written objection to the application, then the vacation request cannot be approved except upon a two-thirds vote of the Board of Aldermen. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on September twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. The commission, by a vote of five to zero, recommends approval of resolution nineteen dash oh three. Public notice of this public hearing was given in the examiner on September twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen. Staff recommends approval.
Anyone have any questions or comments? As this is a public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak for or against may address the board. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the board?
Mayor, Board, Mike Switze, Two-Tane Towne Street, Green Valley, Missouri. What's the stormwater classified as? Is that classified as a utility or what's it classified as?
It could be a number of different things. There are times where it's listed as a drainage easement, but a lot of the older plats just include stormwater and utility easement.
How does that get into an easement, then?
As far as...
I'm carrying stormwater across my property and there's an easement behind it and the easement's not being used. So I don't want, I don't want people taking the easement away and I have to continue...
Well, yep. So part of what Mr. Trozen, when he made the comment that it's no longer, for this to be looked at, it would have to no longer be for the public good or it didn't have a use for the public good.
I understand that, but how do I get the water off my property?
Well, it's not, so that, in that case, it's being used for what, that is the public good, is carrying stormwater. So when these kind of requests...
Yeah, but isn't that supposed to be done on the utility easement?
It could be any number of things. That's what I was saying. Typically nowadays, it's shown as a drainage easement.
Shouldn't I get permission to let you use my property for drainage?
So if it's an easement, that would have been established...
Not an easement. You're using my actual property. You're not using the easement that's established. That's what's my concern.
So easements generally are on private property.
You're saying it's bigger than easement, is what you're saying?
I'm sorry?
You're saying it's bigger than the easement, that water is...
Not even close to the easement.
Yeah, I think he's saying is there's so much water that it's outside of...
Other than water, the actual, the drainage is close right across my property. It doesn't, and I have easements all around me that's not being used to take the drainage water.
The actual water that's not, he's holding water that's coming from other places that aren't part of the easement. Like his actual backyard or whatever.
Yes.
It's not...
I have a ditch in my backyard that's handling water from way too much area.
Right.
Not local water.
Yeah, but on the whole vacation of right-of-way or easements, I don't think what you're talking about is necessarily the same thing as the vacation side here.
Well, I don't want, I don't want easements being vacated when you're not even using the ones that you should be using. That's why, that's why. That was why my original question was...
So on the vacation side of it, you as a property owner would have to know.
But what is the question of stormwater? Whose responsibility is it for, to deal with stormwater? Is it the city's responsibility?
Well, I mean, that's what, it depends on how it's even on there. I mean, there's different kinds of stormwater for one. I mean, there's the...
Ken, you know what's on there. You've been, you've seen it.
I do, but I guess what I'm getting at is it's two separate things here and to be able to vacate it. You as a property owner would take a part in that.
Right, but I'm still wanting a definition of stormwater. Is it a utility or not? Or is it a responsibility of the city?
So, like, on a, say on a plat, if it's the utility easement there, it'll show whether it's like, it'll say responsible for stormwater, any kind of utilities. It basically lists it on the plat typically. But easements are, there's easements that are filed too that aren't even on plats that are separately recorded. So I don't, there's no straight, I guess it's not a straight...
You put the easement in order to take care of the utility lines, take care of the internet, take care of the telephones and all that.
Right, but stormwater is included in that a lot of times and that's kind of all dependent on how that easement's written.
Yeah, I might add that typically when you do, like, say if you do subdivision regulations and, or when you approve a subdivision or plating, sometimes there are provisions put in that where a developer is responsible for making sure that the surface water flows in, you know, certain areas along certain paths. Most of the time, cities are not responsible for stormwater and in fact, under Missouri law, stormwater is considered essentially just a reasonable use. It used to be the common enemy doctrine. You could do anything to divert stormwater from your property to someone else's and it was a common enemy. That's more of a reasonable use since the nineteen nineties. But unless a city actually has curb and gutter where they actually drop stormwater down into inlets and into a piped-out drainage system, the cities are typically not responsible for stormwater. That's just something that naturally occurs from that standpoint. I think to the point that Mr. Murphy is trying to bring up is while this is a generally applicable new rule for how individuals might be able to do a right-of-way vacation, this is, you know, just a tool for doing that. If you have a very specific problem, that would be something to maybe bring back to city staff, you know, outside of this meeting to work through a particular issue to see if there's any, you know, thing that the city is responsible for or not and then we can work with you with respect to getting, you know, at least some answers for you if not getting the issue resolved.
That's fair enough. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak for or against the proposal? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Hey, next up is going to be ordinances.
Mayor, I move we make the first reading by title only for bill nineteen dash twenty-seven.
I have motion of Alderman to make the first reading of bill B nineteen dash twenty-seven. Do I have a second? Second on the clock. Any discussion? All fair suit say aye. All for the same sign.
Mayor, this is the first reading of bill number nineteen dash twenty-seven, an ordinance amending chapter four hundred zoning regulations of the code of ordinances to include new sections regarding the Planning and Zoning Commission and that section four hundred point three six zero be amended to address the appointment of members of the Board of Adjustment.
Mayor, I move we accept the first reading for bill nineteen dash twenty-seven, bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion of Alderman to make the first reading of bill B nineteen dash twenty-seven for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Now, this isn't going to force anybody off the board, is it?
That's correct. So I know currently we have, what, eight people on there?
Well, currently there's, you could have eight people, but there are currently seven people appointed. So we have one vacancy.
Okay.
And then there will be need to look at reappointments of those existing plan commissions members once they, this goes in force.
All right. Seeing none, then this will be, we'll call? No, it's not a recall, it's first reading. Voice vote. All right. Seeing none, all fair suit say aye. All for the same sign.
At six oh, that motion carries.
Mayor, I move we make the first reading by title only for bill nineteen dash twenty-eight.
I have motion of Alderman to make the first reading of bill B nineteen dash twenty-eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair suit say aye. All for the same sign.
Mayor, this is the first reading of bill number nineteen dash twenty-eight, an ordinance amending chapter four hundred zoning regulations of the code of ordinances to include new sections establishing a process for the vacation of right-of-way and utility easements.
Mayor, I move we accept the first reading for bill nineteen dash twenty-eight and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion of Alderman to make the first reading of bill B nineteen dash twenty-eight for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair suit say aye. All for the same sign.
Mayor, that motion carries six zero.
Mayor, I move we make the first reading by title only for bill nineteen dash twenty-nine.
I have motion of Alderman to make the first reading of bill B nineteen dash twenty-nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, this just relates to the ordinance that you guys just looked at, establishing vacation of right-of-way for any development and construction fees that has to be approved by ordinance. So this would make that, after the second reading was approved, this would make that where we could actually charge that fee for this request.
And this is supposed to really pay for the publications of the public hearing, correct?
Who pays that fee?
That would be the applicant that's going to pay that.
Each one?
No, it's just one fee for the whole thing. So I mean, how that's, how that comes to us is up to the applicant.
See any more questions? All fair suit say aye. All for the same sign.
Mayor, this is the first reading of bill number nineteen dash two nine, an ordinance amending section one four zero point zero five zero, development and construction fees to include a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar application fee for vacation of right-of-way and utility easements.
Mayor, I move we accept the first reading for bill nineteen dash twenty-nine and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion of Alderman to make the first reading of bill B nineteen dash twenty-nine for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
One question, and it, it may or may not be directly related to this, but in lumping both these two bills together, someone's going to come in and pay a fee, there's a process being established with all this. Will, I would assume the city's going to guide whoever comes in and have numbers and you need to talk to this utility, that utility, here's the contact number.
So we've already, we've already created a draft utility consent form that an applicant could then use to make that contact with the utility. And most utility companies have liaisons that work in this type of work, you know, with local government. And we'll have a list of who those contacts are. Water and sewers are easy, that would be the city. But we also have contacts with the electrical, cable, gas. And they're very familiar with this process and so the form, we are very familiar with what they see from other cities as far as granting consent, that they have no objection to the vacation of that right-of-way reason.
I was just, it popped in my head as we were talking, I was just concerned someone comes up and then you've got to wade through the internet trying to find the right phone number to get the right person and pray that your form ends up somewhere where it's going to be good, so.
Yeah, we will do our best to help guide any applicants to do that process. And I think by having a uniform consent form for those utilities will help as well.
And who's responsible for paying for these utilities and things on this property?
For paying for the utilities? Well, utility companies...
Paying to have someone come in and do all of these various things.
You mean the application fee? I guess I'm not following.
No, the fee to put propane or whatever on the property or run lines to get...
Oh, I guess we're, what this would actually do is, well, let's say there's an easement that's been recorded as a part of a plat, but a utility company decided not to put any utilities within that easement and they have no plans to put any utility within that easement. This gives an opportunity for those property owners to request that that easement be vacated. And so what we want to do is we just want to make sure that we have the consent of those utility companies, that they have no plans to put the utility in there and therefore they agree with the, or have no objection to the vacation. So it wouldn't be the establishment of putting a new utility within that easement, it's basically vacating that property so the property could go back to those adjoining property owners.
Is there any additional questions? Seeing none, all fair suit say aye. All for the same sign.
That motion carries six zero, Mayor.
Let's just, ordinances. Seeing no resolutions, move on to city attorney's report.
Mayor, I have a couple just transitional items for you for our firm. We're very pleased to announce that Jennifer Baird and Jeremy Coover, who've been attorneys in my office for the last five years, they were named partners in the firm as of October the first. We're excited about that. Also wanted to let you know, Julian Hartner, I think she's covered a few meetings out here, she has decided to accept a position in-house at the city of Kansas City, Missouri's legal department. So her last day is tomorrow. We're excited to see her go. We're really excited...
Oh, Joe.
I'm sorry?
You keep running them off.
I guess, I don't know. We have a brand-new associate starting though on Wednesday, Charlie Merriweather. Charlie actually was a law school classmate of Julian, so he's got two years' experience already and most recently comes to us from the Missouri Senate where he was in charge of researching bills for the local government committee and the criminal and jurisprudence committees and elections, I believe it was. So I was trying to go from memory, so we're excited about bringing Charlie on board as well and at some point we'll be bringing him through to meet you all.
Next up to the city administrator and staff report.
I'll start with Ms. Ozinbaugh.
Mayor and members of the board, I just wanted to make sure you all had it on your calendars and to share with your constituents that we will have our next public meeting on the Green Valley Community Campus on October twenty-ninth. That starts at six-thirty. We expect it to run about an hour. It will begin with a presentation from SAP Design where we're at with the master plans for the site. We have three options we'll be presenting and giving the public a chance to give input and vote on those master plans for the site. And there will be time for individual questions and, you know, meeting with city staff and things afterwards. It'll be at Snire Bar Elementary. We have arranged through the Parks and Rec Department to have structured childcare with some form of activity, so parents don't have to worry and we can get over that obstacle. And we are also looking at some incentives with some water bill credits for people to come. I know that's been used in the past and been very successful. So flyers have gone out at the chamber luncheon. We've put flyers in the water bills. They've been on Facebook, on the internet. Sarah's going to be working to reach out to the homeowners associations. We'll have flyers hopefully at Trailer Treats, so we're doing our best to get the word out in a variety of formats for that event. Also, kind of on a similar note, if you haven't already seen it or heard about it, we do have a website up and going for the project. It's just envisiongreenvalley.com and that's where we'll continue to update some of the master plans will be available. Our hope is to also use the school district to record the presentation for those who are unable to attend, crossing our fingers that that works out. I'm crossing our fingers that that works out and sounds good. And you know how media can be a little fickle sometimes, but my hope is that we can get the link on that website so everyone can have a chance to see it.
Mr. Trozen.
So just wanted to report back to you on October fifth, we co-hosted the Household Hazardous Waste Event with the, uh, Jackson County. Uh, the event was held at Jackson County Public Works Facility out on Old Forty Highway. We had a hundred and sixty-eight cars come through who, uh, were able to dispose of their household hazardous waste, uh, materials. Um, also in regards to the two thousand nineteen road program, that's been completed. Um, you recall, you approved a, uh, contract that we piggybacked off Jackson County with Superior Bowen, focused on the streets up in the Greystone subdivision as well as some deep patching on Woodbury, uh, Road. So all that has now been completed. Um, the last thing, I wanna give a shout-out to the Public Works Maintenance folks. Um, they installed the pedestrian signals on Main Street, done a great job, and, um, really appreciate all their work on that.
Chief Beal.
Mayor, Board, I just wanted to advise you guys that on October twenty-sixth, we're gonna have a shredding event. It's from nine to noon, and then we'll have a drug take-back from ten AM to two PM. So if you have any drugs that you need to turn in or, or documents you need shredded, uh, we'll be right here on the south side of the Police Department. The shredding event, nine to noon, drug take-back, ten to two.
Mr. Davies.
Uh, Mayor, members of the board, uh, we have our annual Trailer Treats event coming up, uh, week from this Friday. It's, it's October twenty-fifth. Uh, it's from six-thirty to eight-thirty PM. Um, hopefully most of you have noticed the Patrick Mahomes and Travis Kelsey hay bale characters that we have on, on Forty Highway. Uh, and anyway, uh, but yeah, so we're, we've been really promoting that. I think we've got close to thirty, uh, local businesses, local organizations that will be there, uh, passing out information about, um, their, their business, their organizations, as well as handing out candy. And then of course, the city will have, uh, several spooky scenes throughout the trail. We'll have the hay riot again, the hay play area, so we're hoping that weather will cooperate. Um, again, we, we are collecting, um, non-perishable items, toiletries for the Green Valley Assistance Council, uh, that night. And I know, uh, Sarah Netto, our Public Information Officer's always looking for volunteers. So if any of you are interested in, in coming out and, and helping, please, uh, contact her as soon as you can, and I'm sure she'll, she'll find a job for you.
Ms. Logan.
I have two things. Um, one is reminding you of the budget meeting this Thursday night, the seventeenth, at the high school. Um, it is gonna be a little different getting in there. I'll try and get some clarification out to you, but it's an entrance on the east side of the new library. Um, and I guess it's an unmarked door. Someone's going to be waving at me, so I will be waving at you. So that's about all I know there.
Yeah, it's, it's easy to see.
Is it? Okay, that's good. Um, and then the second thing is there's a community prayer breakfast. I think you guys have gone to this maybe in the past. Looks like it's on November eighth at six-thirty in the morning, um, at Adams Point. I just need to hear from you if you have any plans to attend that or sit at the table. So I'll send out a message about that as well. And that's it.
Um, just had a couple of things. Uh, going off of the budget workshop, your budget books are put together and they're on the table in the conference room. So make sure that you take one of those before you leave. Um, and then kinda piggybacking off of what Shannon had said with the hay bales. I don't know if you guys realize the amount of staff time that goes into that type of thing, but like the painting of the hay bales, that's all done by staff. Actually Ray Draper, our Codes Enforcement Officer, goes out there and every year somehow makes that work. Jerry with Parks and Rec, make, and his guys make sure the hay bales get out there. And then, you know, even organizing the picture, um, that Sarah put together. I know Channel Nine had picked that up on the Facebook page, so, um, just trying to do a lot of things to get out there. And I think sometimes maybe people don't understand that, that, that's all done in addition to a lot of people's normal jobs, so... Thanks staff for that. And that is all the staff reports.
Next up, support of Alderman reports and comments. Alderman Stratton.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to Shannon for taking me out on the miniature. Um, it's not open yet completely, but, um, it was nice to...
There's no gargles, you could ran off and...
Wanted to be clear that it's not open for the public thing yet, but it was nice for me 'cause, you know, with being on the park board to hear the plan and everything, but to be able to actually go out and see it in person, I'm definitely a visual kind of person, so... But thanks for taking the time to take me out there, I appreciate it.
Alvin Totten?
Well, I would like to say thank you to the, uh, Public Works gentlemen. They did an excellent job. Now I've been teaching some of the people now. I was up there this morning showing some older ones, but we didn't wish much use because today was a holiday and most of my shops were closed. Now tomorrow...
You're just not out there randomly hitting those buttons, are you?
No, I'm frustrated.
Okay, make sure I get calls. It's Alderman Totten out there just hitting the button, making a flash.
I had two gentlemen, older gentleman with me showing them how to do it.
All right.
And I walked across because one was afraid that he couldn't get it.
Well, you better walk across.
Huh?
If you hit the button, you better walk across.
Right. I do appreciate everything they did because, uh, and tomorrow I look forward to seeing. Because as I said today, we didn't have anything open, the new ones. And I've had nothing but thank you, friends, a big thank you. Now we didn't go to the tattoo part, whatever, I was like, the big one, I couldn't go on the street.
All right. Alvin Bass?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, Alvin Headley?
Uh, just wanted to, Mayor, what, uh, Mike said earlier. Thanks Shannon for his team's work on the, the chili cook-off this last weekend. Appreciate it.
Alvin West?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
All right, Alvin Cleaver?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to say thank you to Public Works for coming out for my, uh, little, uh, spring leak I had.
I can't really look at it too.
I know. We got, well, we...
Make sure it was, somebody didn't have your hose on or something.
No. You know, that's a good law. I'll check it all off.
All right, uh, next, there's reports.
Uh, I didn't think about it. I brought my trophy to set up here in front of it. I didn't, I forgot it. Yeah, I gotta bone to pick with those other judges.
Not missing any.
Uh, other than that, uh, no, we had a, we had a nice time at the chili cook-off. I think it was a great thing, uh, uh, that's all I have. But we do have any for execution sessions or personnel?
That it?
One and, uh, one and three.
All right, one and three, all right. So I'm gonna entertain a motion into adjournment to execution session. That motion, Alvin Headley, second. Stratton, any discussion? Seeing none, Alvin Stratton? Alvin Totten?
Yes.
Alvin Bass? Alvin Headley?
Yes.
Alvin West?
Yes.
Alvin Cleaver?
Yes.
All right, we're during execution session.